To order, members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting. All electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. The City of Hamilton has implemented electronic voting at council and standing committee meetings for decision-based recommendations and motions, which does not include items being received nor procedural motions. Committee members are required to be in their assigned seats in order to vote. Voting results will be visible during the meeting and will appear in the minutes. The first screen will, we will see shows which members have voted and their names will turn green once they have voted. This does not indicate whether they have voted yes or no. The second screen will display the results of the vote. And now we're moving on. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are changes to the agenda. We have an added private and confidential item, 14.1, closed session minutes for December the 17th of 2018. And we also had, have an added notice of motion from Councilor Whitehead respecting an all-season soccer facility.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Nann, seconded by Jackson, all in favor, and you have to vote electronically? Okay, motion carries. We are now at declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Hearing none may have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Clark, all in favor. You have to vote electronically. That motion now carries. We will now move on to the consent items, and this is 7.1, which is Ambulance Act implications. May I have a motion to receive, moved by Paul, seconded by Jackson, all in favor, carried. We now have, need a motion to receive the minutes of the seniors advisory committee, moved by Nann, seconded by Whitehead, all in favor, carried. We're now moving on to discussion items, and we have response to the advisory committee for persons with disabilities inquiries on housing issues. I have a question. If I could just pass the chair over to the vice chair, which is Councilor Pauls. So if you could just press, request the, speak? There you go. Through you, Madam Chair. Just to staff, with respect to the report itself, and we have members from the accessibility committee here, and Councilor Whitehead is now the representative, but I guess the question that they have is, this issue is now going to be deemed to be on, removed from the active list or outstanding list, and from their perspective, they need an understanding of how it can be considered completed at this time, considering that there's nothing tangible that shows that it's been completed. So can anyone expand upon that?
So through the chair, it's completed in terms of us having to bring back an approach to this. We haven't implemented the program, and I understand there is also some question about the fact as would this continue? We've mentioned in the report that once the reserve money is gone, the program would cease to continue, and should we see some positive results, there may be an opportunity for us to continue this with council support on some funding. So I think the best thing might be to receive some direction to report back on the implementation of this project as an information item. It would be later in the year, once we've had a chance to assess the applications that come into the program, but we can certainly do that as a follow-up item, and that keeps it alive. So I'm happy to take that direction.
Perfect. Thank you very much, and I'll now take the chair back. Thank you, Councilor Pauls. So on 10.1, I have a motion to receive, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Pauls, all in favor. Now this requires electronic vote. Okay. And now that vote carries. And now we're moving on to the Hamilton housing benefits. And are there any questions? There, we have a visitor today, Councilor Collins, welcome. And you'd like to be part of the discussion?
I do, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to thank staff for providing this. Adam Swedlin, who prepared the reports, no longer with us. I think he's moved on to Branford, as I've been told. So thanks to those who are still with us, who brought this forward, and as you recall, you seconded, I think, my motion last term at the last meeting at council, where we directed staff to come back with options related to expediting those who are on the waitlist and finding creative ways and means in which to deal with that. And as I understand it, maybe I can ask through Paul, there's still recommendations to come in terms of, in response to that. So maybe I could ask through you, first and foremost, ask the status of that, and I have other questions and maybe comments to make on the report.
Okay. Paul?
So through the chair, yes, the more comprehensive report, we're probably a month or two away from having that come back. The goal of this report, though, was to continue to implement approaches that help us move in that direction where we can and not slow down opportunities we have to make a difference in actually moving people off our housing waitlist.
That's great. And I know that when the report was distributed, Matthew had put an article in the paper on this, and there were some questions from the community in terms of, in a very general, generic sense, you know, how could we be crying, I think some even used on social media, for more resources for housing when we have these positive variances in place? And it's a, it's a very, it's a legislated process. And so as I understand it, Housing Services distributes the money to housing providers, and if I could use as an example for City Housing, which is one of many providers locally, we have a number of vacant properties right now. So we have an apartment building at the end of James Street North, that's a vacant 500 McNabb, which is going through a complete overhaul. We have Jamesville property. I think we have finally accommodated our last resident there, so we have those units that are now completely vacant in that complex, and we'll see demolition of those properties soon. If I use those two properties as the example, housing dollars flow through to those properties to provide the subsidies for residents who are supposed to be living in those units, because we are now renovating and/or, in the case of Jamesville, replacing those units. The subsidy then goes unused, and then is required then to go back to Housing Services. So I want to explain that, because I think there's a good reason and rationale as to why there is a variance. I think what this report does is put those good, it puts those variances to good use. And so our goal is to use those resources in terms of housing needs, and this report will assist with housing people through rent supplements and provide them temporary assistance. At some point in time, these resources will be required. When people then move into those properties, there'll be an expectation that their rent is subsidized, because they are RGI units, and those subsidies then would return to these properties, and again, we would be able to accommodate people with their housing needs. So very creative and very quick turnaround. So I want to, again, emphasize that Paul and his team, Edward now, who's just assumed the position, terrific job in terms of coming back. I'd rather have it, housing people, helping people with their housing needs, rather than sitting in a reserve waiting for something to happen. And I think this is being proactive rather than reactive. So I'm very supportive of what's in front of us. I look forward to the report that's going to come back, that maybe gives us other ways and means in which we, in which we could creatively assist people with their housing. And it is unfortunate, and I've said this many times before, that we've been left to our own devices. We haven't received any resources yet from the federal government, with all of the hoopla that was made around the National Housing Strategy when it was released in 2017, all the money that was attached to it. Little, if any, of those resources have flowed through to Hamilton's housing providers. And so I can only hope that as we lead up to the election, and as it is the case in many regards, checks start to flow through to municipalities when people are just prior to knocking on doors. We'll take those resources, they're certainly needed, but it's unfortunate there wasn't a more consistent revenue stream flowing through to municipalities other than through an election year. And with the province, of course, we see the current government going in the opposite direction, much less interested, I believe, in supporting affordable housing needs. And so I want to thank staff again for being creative. We've been left to our own devices. We are doing probably more than any other community with our $50 million investment from last term, and some of the creative things that we're doing here with some of these motions, it will go a long way. And I would like, or maybe I'll just put committee on notice that I do have a recommendation that's going to come at some point regarding the waitlist. I think there's all kinds of ways and means we can improve it. I think, Mr. Chairman, you many years ago helped me with a motion in terms of just the transfers that are on the waitlist. So when we look at the waitlist and the numbers are reflected here, it includes people who have housing today, and they may in fact be in, if I use City Housing as an example, they're currently housed, and they're on the waitlist because they're looking for a transfer, and those transfers are on this list. So it really isn't a true depiction in terms of who actually has, is in need of housing. I think there's ways and means in which we need to deal with that from a transparency perspective. And then there are, there's the whole issue in terms of the express lane, I think that some in the industry have called it, in terms of, you know, people are given priority, and as I understand it, Hamilton has a much more flexible waitlist criteria than maybe some other municipalities around us, where we allow people, or we give people priority st...
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are changes to the agenda. We have an added private and confidential item, 14.1, closed session minutes for December the 17th of 2018. And we also have an added notice of motion from Counselor Whitehead respecting an all-season soccer facility.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Nan, seconded by Jackson, all in favor, and you have to vote electronically? We are now at declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest here? None. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Clark, all in favor. You have to vote electronically. We will now move on to the consent items, and this is 7.1, which is Ambulance Act implications. I may have a motion to receive, moved by Paul, seconded by Jackson, all in favor. Carried. We now have a motion to receive the minutes of the seniors advisory committee, moved by Nan, seconded by Whitehead, all in favor. Carried. We're now moving on to discussion items, and we have response to the advisory committee for persons with disabilities inquiries on housing issues. I have a question. If I could just pass the chair over to the vice chair, which is Counselor Pauls. So if you could just request the...
Can you speak?
There you go. Through you, Madam Chair. Just to staff, with respect to the report itself, and we have members from the accessibility committee here, and Counselor Whitehead is now the representative, but I guess the question that they have is, this issue is now going to be deemed to be removed from the active list or outstanding list, and from their perspective, they need an understanding of how it can be considered completed at this time, considering that there's nothing tangible that shows that it's been completed. So can anyone expand upon that?
So through the chair, it's completed in terms of us having to bring back an approach to this. We haven't implemented the program, and I understand there is also some question about the fact as would this continue? We've mentioned in the report that once the reserve money is gone, the program would cease to continue, and should we see some positive results, there may be an opportunity for us to continue this with council support on some funding. So I think the best thing might be to receive some direction to report back on the implementation of this project as an information item. It would be later in the year, once we've had a chance to assess the applications that come into the program, but we can certainly do that as a follow-up item, and that keeps it alive. So I'm happy to take that direction.
Perfect. Thank you very much, and I'll now take the chair back. Thank you, Counselor Pauls. So on 10.1, I have a motion to receive, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Pauls, all in favor. Now this requires electronic vote. And now that vote carries. And now we're moving on to the Hamilton Housing Benefits. And are there any questions? We have a visitor today, Counselor Collins, welcome. And you'd like to be part of the discussion.
I do, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to thank staff for providing this. Adam Sweetland, who prepared the reports, no longer with us. I think he's moved on to Branford, as I've been told. So thanks to those who are still with us, who brought this forward. And as you recall, you seconded, I think, my motion last term at the last meeting of council, where we directed staff to come back with options related to expediting those who are on the waitlist and finding creative ways and means in which to deal with that. And as I understand it, maybe I can ask through Paul, there's still recommendations to come in terms of in response to that. So maybe I could ask through you first and foremost to ask the status of that, and I have other questions and maybe comments to make on the report.
Paul?
So through the chair, yes, the more comprehensive report, we're probably a month or two away from having that come back. The goal of this report, though, was to continue to implement approaches that help us move in that direction where we can and not slow down opportunities we have to make a difference in actually moving people off our housing waitlist.
That's great. And I know that when the report was distributed, Matthew had put an article in the paper on this, and there were some questions from the community in terms of, in a very general, generic sense, you know, how could we be crying, I think some even used on social media, for more resources for housing when we have these positive variances in place? And it's a very, it's a legislated process. And so as I understand it, Housing Services distributes the money to housing providers. And if I could use as an example for City Housing, which is one of many providers locally, we have a number of vacant properties right now. So we have an apartment building at the end of James Street North, that's a vacant 500 McNabb, which is going through a complete overhaul. We have Jamesville property. I think we have finally accommodated our last resident there, so we have those units that are now completely vacant in that complex, and we'll see demolition of those properties soon. If I use those two properties as the example, housing dollars flow through to those properties to provide the subsidies for residents who are supposed to be living in those units, because we are now renovating and/or, in the case of Jamesville, replacing those units. The subsidy then goes unused, and then is required then to go back to Housing Services. So I want to explain that, because I think there's a good reason and rationale as to why there is a variance. I think what this report does is put those good, it puts those variances to good use. And so our goal is to use those resources in terms of housing needs, and this report will assist with housing people through rent supplements and provide them temporary assistance. At some point in time, these resources will be required. When people then move into those properties, there'll be an expectation that their rent is subsidized, because they are RGI units, and those subsidies then would return to these properties, and again, we would be able to accommodate people with their housing needs. So very creative and very quick turnaround. So I want to, again, emphasize that Paul and his team, Edward now, who's just assumed the position, terrific job in terms of coming back. I'd rather have it, housing people, helping people with their housing needs, rather than sitting in a reserve waiting for something to happen. And I think this is being proactive rather than reactive. So I'm very supportive of what's in front of us. I look forward to the report that's going to come back, that maybe gives us other ways and means in which we could creatively assist people with their housing. And it is unfortunate, and I've said this many times before, that we've been left to our own devices. We haven't received any resources yet from the federal government with all of the hoopla that was made around the National Housing Strategy when it was released in 217, and all the money that was attached to it. Little, if any, of those resources have flowed through to Hamilton's housing providers. And so I can only hope that as we lead up to the election, and as it is the case in many regards, checks start to flow through to municipalities when people are just prior to knocking on doors. We'll take those resources, they're certainly needed, but it's unfortunate there wasn't a more consistent revenue stream flowing through to municipalities other than through an election year. And with the province, of course, we see the current government going in the opposite direction, much less interested, I believe, in supporting affordable housing needs. And so I want to thank staff again for being creative. We've been left to our own devices. We are doing probably more than any other community with our $50 million investment from last term, and some of the creative things that we're doing here with some of these motions, it will go a long way. And I would like, or maybe I'll just put committee on notice, that I do have a recommendation that's going to come at some point regarding the waitlist. I think there's all kinds of ways and means we can improve it. I think, Mr. Chairman, you many years ago helped me with a motion in terms of just the transfers that are on the waitlist. So when we look at the waitlist and the numbers are reflected here, it includes people who have housing today, and they may in fact be in, if I use City Housing as an example, they're currently housed, and they're on the waitlist because they're looking for a transfer. And those transfers are on this list. So it really isn't a true depiction in terms of who actually has, is in need of housing. I think there's ways and means in which we need to deal with that from a transparency perspective. And then there's the whole issue in terms of the express lane, I think that some in the industry have called it, in terms of, you know, people are given priority. And as I understand it, Hamilton has a much more flexible waitlist criteria than maybe some other municipalities around us, where we allow people, or we give people priority status. Some of it's legislated, some of it's discretionary, and we've just never had a discussion around what our options are in that regard. So I do have something that will come at a later date, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to attend a meeting here today, and thank staff for the good work that they're doing.
Thank you, Counselor Collins, on your leadership on this file. And we now have Counselor Nan.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to clarify, Counselor Collins has offered some insight in terms of where the subsidy has come from, but I just wanted to, in reference to the report, it says the result of unused RGI subsidies occurred due to a confluence of factors, but it's primarily the result of households with incomes that have graduated beyond the thresholds of RGI. So if staff could just take a moment to explain, I guess, the balance of how we've gotten to the $2 million.
Well, through the chair, the vast majority of it is exactly that. We have more people with earned income. Of course, we flow out a subsidy that would be the entire amount of the difference between what a tenant would pay in an RGI system and what the market rent of that unit is available. So any earned income that changes that dynamic, again, means that we're flowing, at the end of the day, we're reconciling less subsidies out the door. And then the big factor is, we do have people that are choosing to stay in the units, although they are paying what essentially is the market rent. And the reality of that is a very, a very strong one, which is, most of those units fluctuate around the 80% of average market rent, so they are very affordable units on their own. And so that makes it a lucrative piece of property to keep in as a tenant, because as you know, when you go into the private market, you could be paying a lot more to start and have less controls about those increases over time. So we're not in the business of evicting, we're not under the Act allowed to push our housing providers to evict, so folks can stay in those units as long as they want to, and we encourage that from an affordability perspective as well, because we would hate to see them cycle back onto the waitlist simply because they moved out and then couldn't afford to be in another market setting. So as you can see, that number has grown over the last few years, a chart that Adam had put in when he was preparing this report. And that's why we decided that it was time to act on this in a bit of a different way, that we're now recovering subsidies at a much higher level. I can tell you, there is a bit of recovery that happens as well around some of the other, what we call benchmarked issues with our social housing providers, and this could be lower mortgage renewals on the properties than we expected. So we flow out a lot of resources based on what we expect in a year, and sometimes those are higher and sometimes they were lower. For those that have been around council for some time, there were years where we had deficits of $2 to $3 million within that line. So the past few years have been positive variances, but it does also fluctuate the other way, and that happens when we have a higher number of people in need of fuller subsidies, and also the providers themselves having higher costs for some of their operating dollars that we flow to them as well. So that's the confluence of issues as it's reported in the report, and that's why we're in a position to do something. I will tell you also, alongside the report we're bringing back with options within that, we are going to look at what more permanent solutions to this issue may be, and how we deal with the chronic situation we are in, which is, we have a target of 8,400 or so units, and we're not meeting that target consistently because of the issues that Counselor Collins had described and others. So we do have to look at the issue as a whole, but while we've got some opportunities to help people with their rents in other ways, we're going to take that opportunity.
I'll hold the rest of the questions till a little bit later, but thank you for that response.
Thanks, Counselor Nan. And we now have Counselor Terry Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I certainly think this is a very positive direction. However, you made a couple of comments in your explanations, and I just want to flush that out a bit. So I'm going to deal with the real life experience, and then, I mean, you only have limited housing units within our portfolio. At some point, you want to see people, I would hope, transcend into other housing units so you can open up access for those in need, because we don't control outside our portfolio. And the comment you made, we encourage them to stay, even if that market value concerns me to some degree, and here's why. So my wife is an immigrant, came to Canada, was a single mom, very low income, worked her way through to the point where she got to market value in social housing. We met, I'm obviously making a good income, we get married and move out to our own home, open up that unit. So I'm trying to understand, in the context of the comment you made, how that would work, because I certainly wouldn't necessarily want our limited capacity to be eaten up by people that make more than enough to pay market, full market value outside of this portfolio.
So through the chair, thanks for that. Just to clarify, that we don't encourage a structural approach that would push people out sooner than they need to be out. So as you know, we have a number of programs, including programs that help people with homeownership, because as you've pointed out, we do want to encourage people to move on to other opportunities where it makes sense, but we do not want to set up a structural system where there is the threat per se, that once you get to market units, that you're going to be forced out of that unit. We're not able to do that by law, and we don't want our providers to have that kind of a regime. So thanks for the opportunity to clarify that. Where possible, it's nice to see movement through the system. The challenge is sometimes that that may put people in a precarious position, but that's not something that we can always control.
So back to the scenario, they meet a partner who's making well in excess of what the requirements are. They can move into that unit, and now you have $100,000 income living in a social housing unit that's paying market value. Is that possible under our lease?
Through the chair, I mean, it would depend on who the tenant is and all the rest, but yeah, that's theoretically possible. These are apartment units, they're not a programmed unit, where there is parameters to your residency. You sign a lease agreement like everyone else in the community, whether you're in a nonprofit or a city housing unit, or whether you're in the private unit.
And in that lease, can we not define those parameters? Through the chair?
Well, through the chair, we couldn't define that. We would have to change the intent of what those units are, and so you would be entering into more of a programmatic piece. I can tell you that there are situations in the community where social organizations have entered into what are called head leases, in order to provide a program that would also provide some shelter accommodation. But in terms of the rental unit themselves, no, that's governed under the same laws that all other rental units are in the province of Ontario.
I appreciate that. So understanding that subsidies are operating, they're not capital. We are using surplus subsidies based on what was the circumstances, which was described. The go into the reserve, we decide we want to get as many people into housing and assist as we can, and there's a creative way of doing that, and so I think that's great. Help me understand, because I didn't quite make the linkage, I mean, that only lasts so long. And I think you're not sure what, does that apply to all units, whether you're within Hamilton umbrella of social housing, or does it private rental units? Help me understand that.
So through the chair, in this case, we're creating a housing benefit, so these are rent supplements essentially. So these could be applied to a variety of settings. So this isn't creation of new rent gear-to-income units, this is allowing individuals to apply for rent supplement programs. Like we have today, we have hundreds of people under rent supplement programs, essentially consider this to be an expansion of that program, and these rent supplements would be in place for individuals for up to five years.
And up to five years, so there's a sunset to this particular subsidy. When these dollars are used up, is there a bridging, or is this will cover that five-year period?
Through the chair, we've done this before. Some of our other supplement programs have time limits on it, and our staff worked diligently with folks to understand how they can move through this process. So not dissimilar to other programs we've run. In fact, it mirrors a lot of the things that we've done in the past with council, which is why we went to do this. Not a new approach, just more of it, and it will allow more people to access this program. And, you know, rent supplement programs, because they are not building these units and funding all of the operations and everything else, you know, are meant to be these bridges to help people find housing and then work with them in order to achieve the income they need to be sustainable.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate Counselor Collins and others in their leadership on this file. And I think it's so important, so important, because often headlines do not describe what's actually going on. And it's unfortunate, the way things are described is more about captivating readers, and unfortunately, not everyone reads the full article and walks away with an impression the city doesn't know what the hell they're doing. When, I think Counselor Collins has already described, in fact, if you delve into all the nuances around what is taking place, we are managing the system in a very, very, what's the word, in a very good way. And I think that needs to be the story, and not only are we doing it in a good way, but we're being creative in regards to making sure that as much of the dollars are going directly back to benefit the people in need. So I thank that clarification as well. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to ask a few questions, basically I'm paraphrasing what I understand, because I have heard from people who are under the impression that somehow there was a screw-up, and that's why we've got this money that we didn't deal with, and we should have used it on people that were truly in need. And I think sometimes it's just the communication, and it's so complex and issue, people get, they start to misunderstand. So in the geared-to-income rental system, there are some folks who have very low income, they get that apartment, that's a part of the entire program, and then it kind of goes up the scale. So you can earn more income, so as you earn more income, you don't get kicked out of your home, it goes up the scale, and you can get up to really what is about 80% of the total market value of any rental property in the city of Hamilton, and we call that market rent, which is, I'm seeing lots of nodding, so so far I'm on the right page. The law, as I understand it, does not permit any housing authority to evict someone who's on rental geared-to-income housing, who hits that 80% mark. It's just not, you cannot say, okay, you have to go and find your own unit. Am I being accurate in that?
Through the chair, correct.
And so what we're talking about here is, when the economy is really doing well, people find that they're earning more income, and the actual subsidy that we have available to rental income, we're not spending as much, because they're actually earning more income, so they don't continue to get a reduction in their rent, they're actually paying more rent based on their income. And that's what the variance became. So the $2 million, that's where the variance was from, and it's not that we didn't spend the money on other people that were in need, it's in fact that the economy has been doing much, much better, and folks, their income has increased, and as a result, that variance is available now to us for utilization elsewhere. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's very accurate, and further to that, not the first time it's happened. Typically, around this council chamber, you've dealt with that at the year-end variance report. You did last year with a similar amount and placed it in reserve. The piece we're looking more closely at is really this should be used for rent gear-to-income work, and that's why we're using it in a way to provide a rent gear-to-income supplement in a different way, through a rent supplement program, rather than actually building a unit of housing. So you're accurate on those accounts.
Thank you. And we have the discretion in terms of how we use that money, but we're choosing to use that money to assist folks who are on that list that are looking for help, and this is one way of doing it, approximately $270 a month is the subsidy that would really help how many families?
So through the chair, that depends. It depends if they all need that full amount, because of course, people could be, again, in a situation where they need less or a little bit more. We wouldn't go too much higher than those rates, but we do take into account the person's situation. So this is, you know, I think the estimate was somewhere around 110, 120 potentially, but again, those are estimates based on, we won't know until we get into the program what it looks like, but that's the approximate value of it for that period of time. The other thing that would change that dynamic is if people move off a rent supplement program faster than a number of years, then again, we'd be able to cycle more people through this program. And I just do want to go back a little bit to say, yes, there's flexibility, but not really a ton of flexibility, as in we could use this for radically different approaches to dealing with homelessness and housing. This is meant to be used for social housing in the rent gear-to-income sphere, so we have to stay close to that, although we have flexibility in how we're applying it, and that's why we've chosen this approach.
So one of the issues, Mr. Chairman, is, I heard from pundits, would be my terminology, that we could be utilizing that money to fix some of the properties that are in disrepair. And so we're failing on that grounds, we should be using it there. But in reality, there is some restriction in terms of where we can use that money. Is that not a fair statement?
So through the chair, there is some restriction. I suppose if you're fixing up an RGI unit, we could have looked at that piece, but I will tell you that we are aggressively doing that anyways. We have several hundred units over the last two years that have had repairs done to them. It's part of the program that council approved under the $50 million Poverty Reduction Fund. So we are aggressively fixing units. I would describe this more as, you know, these issues of, we've got units offline at the moment for revitalization, and you can't, you know, things just take time. So we need to do this, this is one option. You could have us go away and look at other potential pieces. Our opinion and our recommendation is, this is A, the fastest way, and we think fits in line with what will help people move off the waitlist per se, in terms of finding a more affordable place to live the fastest. But there is a little bit of flexibility, but I think those programs, we also looked at where we could use some more enhancement. We feel we're pretty, we're moving along fairly well in terms of the renovation and the retrofitting of offline units. We felt we could use more rent supplements. If we're going to attack that chronological number, the people that are sitting there because of an affordability issue on our waitlist, this is one of the ways that you can effectively do that.
One of the other criticisms I heard is that it is just one-time funding. Now, when I look at the report and I understand the report, the one-time funding is from this one-year's variance. But that one-year's variance creates a pool of money that can be utilized, projected for five years for approximately 100 families.
Through the chair, correct. And then further to that, we're going to bring forward what would be a more long-term, sustainable approach to this as well, but we always have to guard against the ups and the downs. And as I say, I've been around this place when our social housing budgets were in deficit, so we don't need to compound that with these other issues. So yes, we're working through that. It also takes time for these programs to materialize and us to work with the individuals, so, you know, I think that we'll have more back in front of you well before we will have reached that threshold of families, and there may actually be more that we can do to address the issue.
And finally, the $274, how does that flow to the families? They're paying rent right now, and so we have a list of families that are needing assistance. Walk me through a real quick process, how do we choose which families? I'm assuming it's from the list, and we're now providing that money to offset that amount of money, because some people have been describing as it a windfall for families, and that's not the case at all.
I'm going to let Kirsten walk you through what would be the typical process around this, just so you can understand how people get into these programs.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Typically, people are chosen from the chronological waitlist. Someone who's right at the top of the list may choose not to do a rent subsidy, because they expect to get full rent gear-to-income subsidy fairly soon. So sometimes it's a little bit down the list. But our staff would go into the list, select the next chronological people, offer them the subsidy, you know, there's an application process and income vetting and all of that. And then when they're accepted, ultimately, there is an arrangement made with the landlord, and typically, the landlord is paid the rent directly, which the landlords are usually very positive about that, because they can be guaranteed of a certain amount of rent.
And we continue to monitor their income, if their income changes, then the amount of the subsidy to the landlord to them would change also, correct?
Yes, yeah, typically.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm very positive about this. I think this was a great opportunity to use in the variance. The variance, I know, I've seen the variance in the negative area, so we've had some real challenges over the years, not just in Hamilton, right across the province, but this is a very positive situation. Next year's variance may be different, we may want to choose to put that money into a stabilization fund or something else, that's the prerogative of the board and the city. I do want to take the opportunity to... I do want to take the opportunity to offer my congratulations to councillor Collins. I sat on the City Housing Board, I think in my very first term, for two years, and I was incredibly frustrated, because my, nothing was happening, nothing was changing, and it was like the status quo. And so I watched very carefully in the last four years from the outside, and I was incredibly pleased at how much progress has been made in four years on many issues that we struggled to deal with in my very first term, and we were basically walking away saying, there's nothing we can do about it. And so councillor Collins, and he knows me well, I don't blow smoke up skirts, that's not my way, but he really did grab the bull by the horns and then started to address some of these issues, and we're now seeing the benefits from it, and we're actually providing more service into the community. So, the leadership is spectacular, so I really do appreciate that, and I thank him for that. Mr. Chairman, I'm finished now, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark. We have councillor Nan.
Thank you, through the chair, and I'm really encouraged to see this report come forward too, and definitely excited that we're going to be able to continue supporting tenants who need the support through a rent supplement program. But I just wanted to hear from our staff. So yesterday during the GIC meeting, we had heard from the RFU or Hamilton Report that the scorecard indicated that the percentage of tenants, tenant households that are currently spending thirty percent or more on their shelter has increased over the, I guess, the two-year, I guess, the first statistic was 2011, and then the updated stat was based on reports connected to 2016, that currently put Hamilton at 45.4 percent of tenants. Forty-five point four percent of all tenants in the city are spending more than thirty percent of their income on their shelter, which also kind of correlates, but probably our waitlist is significantly less than that forty-five point four percent. So I just want to say that it's an ongoing problem, and I think that personally, as a councillor, I'm looking forward to hearing the review of the five-year housing and homelessness strategy, and how we're moving forward to address that root issue, that staff have been doing an aggressive and creative job of meeting. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff who've been showing progress, but also putting in the context that we still have a lot of work to do in the next five years, and this supplement will help bridge the gap for 120 households. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nan, and councillor Pauls.
Yes, through the chair, can I ask Paul Johnson, I know we allocated $50,000 to establish a tenant defense fund, can you explain how that works, what that $50,000 is going for, and what's happening there? I was here, I remember voting for it, but can you explain it?
So, through the chair, we're still working through bringing that back. If we don't get it to the end of February meeting, it would be in March that we'll bring back what that would do. Essentially, it's a grant program to help, you know, tenants get advice and retain some legal support in dealing with above guideline increases that are occurring, as has been reported, more frequently in this community than ever before. So, the $50,000 was a ballpark, we're unsure about what that formal amount would be. The report that you have before you, in terms of the rent supplement program, just so everybody's clear, would not impact that. We have enough room in this that this would not bump out the tenant defense fund at all, so not to worry on that front. But in terms of all the details on that fund, we're still working through that, and that's not due to come back for another month to two months.
Can you explain, because I don't really understand it, so if I'm on to geared-to-income housing, and it goes up, who pays for it? Like I said, is that what you're saying, you're going to establish a $50,000 to fight that, or?
So, through the chair...
Who puts the rent up, city housing?
So, through the chair, this is not a situation that happens in places like City Housing Hamilton or other social housing providers, it's typically the private sector that we see this happening in. It's not that it couldn't happen in nonprofit housing, but it doesn't typically happen. So this would not be for folks who are on rent geared-to-income housing, because that's a rather fixed calculation. This is more for private tenants in situations where their increases in rent are going up above guideline, as is the right of landlords to go and apply for an above guideline increase, but what happens typically is that tenants are left then to represent themselves, and this fund would assist tenants in getting some representation and some advice as to how to best proceed if they wish to challenge those. So that's what we're working through, and we'll bring that report back shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pauls. Can I just pass the chair over to councillor Pauls for one moment, your mic's still on, so, okay. Do you have to request it again?
Thank you. Just, what I'd like to highlight, though, is the issue surrounding funding sources. So, through you, Madam Chair, we're probably, Ontario's probably one of the only jurisdictions that has housing being funded at the municipal level, hence the regressive nature of that. And when the downloading file back in 1995 was born, many had warned, including myself and others, that, including councillor Collins, Jackson, Whitehead, I think, that this inevitably was going to pan out the way it's panning out, it's just it's unaffordable, to have housing on the backs of the residential taxpayer because of the regressive nature of it. Yet, we're not hearing from the province any strategy to combat to the level that we need, and any strategy to combat this crisis that we're faced with, and clearly, most municipalities in Ontario are faced with. And being that we're the only Western Democratic jurisdiction in the Western Democratic Hemisphere that has housing on the backs of residential taxpayer, what are you hearing from our provincial masters regarding what they plan on doing, if anything, regarding this issue?
So, through the chair, you are quite right, we're one of the rare jurisdictions in the world that has much of this being funded through a property tax base. As you'll hear tomorrow in my budget presentation, $45 million of net levy contribution goes towards housing in this community of the $90 million or so budget for housing services. So, there is a tremendous pressure, and then, add to that, what was downloaded is a very old stock. This is not stuff that was built brand-new and downloaded, we are at end-of-life, and as you had heard, I can't remember what meeting it was in, it was probably a capital meeting, but councillor Collins talked about the issues faced at City Housing Hamilton, and how basically much of their capital for this year is just going to go to fix one issue in a particular complex. What we're hearing from the provincial government, and I will tell you that senior staff from a number of GTHA municipalities are meeting informally to talk about issues of housing, we're hearing right now a lot about this housing supply consultation that's going on, which quite frankly, is not going to unlock a lot of affordable housing. So I, you know, I've been making that point, that yes, housing supply is important across a continuum, but affordable housing's the issue. And I'm hearing not a lot in terms of new money for the programs that we need to keep housing affordable. If you're talking about deep affordability issues, there is no way around it, other than to fund it as a program. And in my estimation, like education, healthcare, and those issues, is done at an income tax level, I don't know how you make it work at any other level. So we dance around a little bit, I think we can unlock supply in certain ways, and we're being as creative as we can here in Hamilton, but when you talk about rent geared-to-income, when you talk about deep affordability, even to getting to eighty percent of average market rent, doing that without some level of government subsidy is next to impossible, and it's next to impossible to do at scale. So what worries me is two things. The aging stock, so we have to revitalize what we have already, forgettable building new, we might actually start to lose some of what we have already if we don't invest the capital into it. And then the other side is that everybody wants these programs to somehow magically happen, and without a concerted investment effort, that's not going to occur. So my worry sometimes is we talk a lot about housing at one end of the continuum, and not at the end of the continuum that we're discussing today with our $2 million, but you think about it, it's a wonderful investment, I'm very proud of our staff for thinking through this, but on the other hand, it's a small amount. The Poverty Reduction Fund amount at $50 million is a wonderful contribution and leadership by our council, it doesn't build a lot of housing. So those are the challenges we're up against, and sorry to go on, but I think you kind of threw me something there to go on a little bit about.
No, I prefer to...
And these are the issues that keep us up at night within this department, and certainly within housing services.
And through you, Madam Chair, I think the vicious cycle is going to continue and only worsen in time, because you have some of the most marginalized, being marginalized by paying within their rents, contrary to what people think sometimes, they're paying municipal taxes, and they're paying a larger share of municipal taxes than someone that's a homeowner. So as a result, the more the downloading file compounds its ugly face to us, the more it victimizes the most marginalized, so it really separates the haves from the have-nots and compounds that. And until it's reversed, I can assure you that everything that's happening is happening by what we had warned, and nothing is a surprise, except to some. And suddenly, people are coming out of the woodwork and saying, they seem to all have the answers, when this thing has been in place since 1995, if not before that, and it really strikes my chord negatively when people always suddenly have the answer after people have been saying exactly what the problem has been for the last 25 years, and they're dealing with it through duct tape, rather than actually rebuilding the foundation, and that's what we need here. We don't need a duct tape job, we need to knock down the existing system and rebuild it from the foundation up. Until we do that, we'll never find a solution. But that solution exists in a progressive form of funding it, not a regressive nature that presently exists. So I just wanted to contribute to that part, and I'll take back the chair, and I'll go to councillor Whitehead.
Just a dovetail, Mr. Chair, on your very salient points that you made. You know, for a long time, when I was elected on the Federation Canadian Municipalities, I was pushing with a group of us for a national housing strategy at the federal level. Over time, obviously, some of that voice has been heard, but what was illustrated here today is even though the federal government has talked the talk and created the programs, the dollars haven't flowed. And that's not lost on us, and I think we need to continue doing what we need to do to ensure that the ones that appears to get it are actually flowing those dollars. And I'm not sure, maybe Paul can answer this, is there a provincial housing strategy at this point in time? Has there been one?
So, through the chair, yes, the province has a number of strategies around housing, of course, those are all being refreshed, because we've had a change of government, and so the new government is looking at that. I will tell you that the conversations I've heard back are, you know, they're not looking at decimating the programs that exist, you know, that's, but we don't know that, that's the kind of anecdotal conversations we're having. I do know the province is focused, as we all are, on the renegotiation of the federal provincial deals around housing, because although there is some direct housing from the feds that we can access for some new construction or revitalization, one of the big concerns is what's going to happen as all of the federal mortgage agreements with our social housing providers end, they're under no obligation at that point to keep that stock in the same affordability range as it once was. There are some positives, they'd also be able to unlock equity, which many are looking at ways of both rejuvenating and creating new housing, but we need to have a good, strong negotiation strategy, you know, the province does with the feds, in order to ensure that that community housing doesn't somehow start to drift away from its core affordability mandate. Great news is, locally, we're hearing lots of good things, our partners are not looking to abandon their mission, many of these are nonprofit organizations and they do have that mission, but I'm concerned if the funding isn't there, it becomes really hard for them to provide deep affordability, which they have in the past, and they're very important partners, and it's 40 years, right? So you get used to it, you get into this routine. So after 40 years, you know, we've become used to something, and now we've got to renegotiate that.
Appreciate that. You did raise something that, and I'm not clear what the implications were, but CHMC also, and the federal government at one point in time actually built housing, and I know that I have a chunk of that in my ward, that are currently being lived in, I don't know, through ownership, I guess, but those mortgages, I believe CHMC are leaving those mortgages, so I'm not sure if we've actually looked at the impact of those residents that are left with, you know, the wake of those decisions. So it's not for now, because we're dealing with this report, I wouldn't mind going off tail, because I know I've got a whole street, a whole street like that, and I've had some concerns being raised by those residents, so. And it's not even hooked with any of the housing providers here, it's directly with CHMC, CHMC or the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. We have no further speakers on this issue, so we're now going to move 10.2 in its electronic vote, so all in favor. Now, we're moving on to motions, and we have the astute councillor Terry Whitehead here to introduce his motion respecting the landlord and tenant board decisions. Councillor Whitehead.
This is moved by myself, seconded by our illustrious chair, Mr. Councillor Sam Marula. And this is the motion that I had talked about, dealing with this other side, that the staff be directed to investigate the staffing and timeliness of decisions by the landlord and tenant board, and report back to the Health and Safety Committee. I don't think I need to say much more, it's been raised through a number of delegations, previous meetings about that concern, it's impacting both tenants and landlords, so it'd be nice to understand what is actually going on and what we should be asking for in the future.
Okay, thank you, councillor Clark.
Thank you very much, I think it's an appropriate motion, for sure. The Social Justice Tribunals Ontario, they've now got all of the tribunals jammed into one department, for better lack of description. I was wondering if we could have a friendly amendment to have staff look at reports to the ombudsman. When I was going through the auditor generals' reports, they've looked at landlord-tenant board a few times, but I'm not sure whether or not the ombudsman has. The ombudsman has a lot more authority than the auditor general, and it would just be interesting to see whether or not we could talk to the ombudsman office and find out if they're actually receiving complaints, and is there a protocol that we could encourage, it doesn't matter who has complaints about the LTB, but to contact the ombudsman, I guess if he or she hits a certain threshold, then they can actually automatically trigger an investigation, so I'll leave it to the mover and staff to look at that.
Councillor Whitehead, would you...
Well, I said definitely a friendly, I just don't know how I write that, but I think when we talk about investigate, I think direction is pretty clear, that if there's any role or opportunity with the ombudsman, that should be part of this process. Would that be okay? Because I just know how to write it.
It's all good, then. Okay, fair enough. We have, oh, you do want to speak? Okay. Councillor Nan.
Thank you, through the chair. So, just a quick question to the councillor who put forward the motion, this is in relation, when we were originally discussing this motion, it came out of when we were talking about the tenant defense fund, and so would it be your wish to have that timed around the staff report around the tenant defense?
No, then I have to declare an interest on that.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, timing, I think I'm, I don't know what the work plan's like, I think it's important to get done. I think that tenant thing is more important in the context of not deviating on any timelines on that, so I prefer to leave this fairly loose on the timelines. I would hope we could do it like in the first quarter, if not the second quarter. I would hope we could do it like in the first quarter, if not the second quarter at the latest in regards to having that report come back.
My question here is just related to staff's earlier comment that the $50,000 pilot or the report that we're doing to look at the extent to which $50,000 will go vis-à-vis the outcome of this kind of report might point to future direction towards that Tenant Defense Fund.
Which makes sense, absolutely.
You know, on that point then, as Chair, I might need to declare an interest. I'm going to have to explore a little further. Being a landlord, my wife and I are landlords. So to just side on call with caution, if I could just maybe take myself out of this discussion and remove myself as a side.
Oh, I'll need another second or then for this. So Nan, would you be prepared to, Counselor Nan?
Clark, set you.
Will you be prepared to second this motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, can you just take over the chair?
I was just asking, I as well rent, but it's a family. So is that a conflict? I rent, one of my house is my mother-in-law. So is that a rental? Okay, then I can't. I'm chairing, so.
Am I the fallback fallback? No one, Counselor Clark. I just have my humble little bungalow. All right. Okay, so who we got next on the speakers list? We have Counselor Clark, Mr. Chair. Can you press that then, please? Are we good? Counselor Clark, please. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. All right then. So it was on Counselor Whitehead's motion, seconded now by Counselor Clark. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried with two, oh, we have to, I'm sorry, still getting out of the traditional habit. All of us vote with Counselor Pauls and Marula declaring their conflict. You can press conflict. There you go. All right. That should be four. Was it going to be four with the two conflicts? That is carried. Chair, back to you. Counselor Marula, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so now we are moving on to 11.2, which is renaming of the Healthy and Safe Communities Committee. Counselor Whitehead, present your motion.
Actually, this was in conjunction with conversations with a number of counselors and certainly Counselor Marula. Emergency services are important and we need to be recognized and we don't want to mix it in with the public works, public health story. So it's renaming of the Healthy and Safe Communities Committee, that the Health and Safe Communities Committee be renamed, the Emergency and Community Services Committee to better reflect the work of the committee and differentiate from the Board of Health.
Moved by Whitehead and I'll second by myself. All in favor? Oh, 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 Counselor Nan, Counselor Nan, sorry.
Through the chair, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm just curious. So coming in at this point on council, Healthy and Safe Communities to me does cover safety, you know, emergency, fire from that perspective. I'm also just curious, how much would a rebranding cost?
Good question. And Paul has the answer to this?
So through the chair, just to be clear, this is the committee's name. So I don't think it's a rebranding issue at all. This would not change the department's name. The department remains the Healthy and Safe Communities Department.
Thank you.
We, of course, in our work, report to two, one standing committee and then, of course, to the Board of Health. So this was seen as a way of differentiating the name for this committee, but not for the department.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay. You're welcome. And no further speakers? And now what we have is the vote and it's electronic. And survey says? It's unanimous. Now, moving on to notice of motions, all-season soccer facility. Counselor Whitehead, you're on a roll today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Jackson. If you want me, I could read it. First of all, I'm looking to waive the rules and I think I need to explain that.
Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Jackson to waive the rules. I accept that you don't need to explain unless others want you to.
Okay. So waive the rules.
Want to speak to this motion or waiving the rules?
Yep, okay. Understand the urgency of it. The issue for me on notice of motion is it's not just for the convenience of the counselors, but it also gives notice to the public if they wish to comment on it or be prepared to comment on it before the motion becomes before us. So I just need to understand the urgency.
Counselor Whitehead.
So it's pretty evident, Mr. Chair, never mind the deficiency situation, which you could argue is chronic and we could address down the road. The issue is actually land and current land availability and land pricing and what might be available and being contemplated in the next number of months. And you do not want to lose those windows. And every day means that another parcel of potential land for the purposes of this feasibility may be taken by somebody else.
I'm not sure that, respectfully, I'm not sure that actually hits the test for urgency because the land values don't change that dramatically over a few months. So in two weeks' time, anyone that might want to comment on it, they would have an opportunity to comment on it.
Mr. Chair, it's not land values. Land values is just a small, it's actually the land availability is the issue.
And again, it's the same issue. Thank you.
Okay, so on the waiving the rules, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Jackson. All in favor?
Carrie.
Opposed?
Go ahead.
Do we have to do electronic on? No. Okay, so all in favor? Okay, and then opposed, Nan and Clark. And, okay, Counselor Whitehead, introduce your motion.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Jackson, whereas there's a high rate of obesity amongst our youth, whereas City of Hamilton continues to encourage healthy living year-round, whereas the opportunity for an all-seasons facility to meet the needs of growing soccer population where there's a need, whereas there's no central, Mr. Chair, I like to take that whereas out because this is, to me, it's not about specifically finding a mountain location. It's about whether we need another facility and whether we should, so I don't want to restrict it to the mountain. So that whereas, I like what you say, ignore it because it's not being restricted to any one location. Whereas the closing of Soccer World in Stony Creek, which was a well-utilized facility by the soccer programs, has created greater demand for space and field time. And whereas the Mountain Hamilton Youth Soccer Association is created, goal is to create a sustainable future soccer program in the City of Hamilton for youth, therefore be resolved that staff be directed to work with Mountain Youth Soccer Association, look at the feasibility to create a year-round soccer multi-use facility dome and report back to the Health and Safety Communities Committee.
Okay. And this is for a privately or publicly owned dome?
Well, I think that's part of the feasibility, Mr. Chair. I'm not restricting it one way or the other, although we do know that Mountain Soccer has a very healthy bank account in the context of actual building. Land is the issue location and I think it's more about working with the city to facilitate siting where it makes the most sense and wherever other might come out of that feasibility.
Okay. Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So can I ask staff a question? How many soccer leagues are active in the City of Hamilton currently?
Through the chair, I'm going to say approximately a dozen, if not more.
And why would we simply consult with or work with one soccer league on the mountain when the actual facility that was closed was in Stony Creek? Why wouldn't we reach out and have consultation with all of the other soccer leagues and hear them out?
Through the chair, I would think that would be good direction to consult with the majority of soccer leagues, especially if they would like to utilize an indoor facility.
So, Mr. Chairman, this goes back to the urgency issue. Respectfully, there are many soccer leagues in the city that may or may not be struggling. We don't know. We really should have given an opportunity for the soccer leagues to come forth and actually talk to us about the issues, what the problems are, and then we could have drafted a motion accordingly. You know, if there's over a dozen leagues, I don't know how many of them are having issues. I know that there's issues in Stony Creek now because of the closure and I think they might find it interesting that we're having a discussion for the mountain when it was in the lower Stony Creek where there was an issue. So I'm just issuing, I don't dispute the need to look at it, but I think it should be a little bit broader than just one league. It should be looking at the overall city.
Okay, I think, no, actually, you know what? Why don't we rewrite it and just reread it, but to incorporate it being a city? Because I think you wanted to do that when you caught yourself saying mountain. So why don't you make it more citywide and have staff? So how many associations did you say? We don't need to say a citywide initiative? Okay. Go ahead.
That would be helpful, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that and I.
No problem. And I think, in all fairness to Counselor Whitehead, he caught it as he was reading it and he tried to correct it. So, okay, go ahead. Can you?
Well, I just want to respond. The Stony Creek, the majority of the use was in fact mountain soccer exercising those programs to kids in Stony Creek. So I want to make it clear that those people that were using it from Stony Creek, the program was actually being administered through the Hamilton Mountain Soccer Youth Association. So in no way did I mean to.
Can you just reread the motion from its beginning?
So what we're going to do, Mr. Chair, is change it to be directed to work with all the soccer programs in the soccer organizations in the City of Hamilton to look at the feasibility.
Consult with?
Yeah.
To look for feasibility? Okay. I'm good with that too. So now we have Counselor Jackson, then Counselor Pauls and Nan.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Ms. Chairman, now I've got a bit of a problem because if I could provide some context to the committee. So why Counselor Whitehead has done this and why it was initially driven from Mount Hamilton Youth Soccer Association, association with over 4,000 kids that are enrolled to play recreational soccer. Their home park is Macassa. They played and practiced a lot. And by the way, we need to technically change Soccer World to Players Paradise. That was the one that was closed in Stony Creek, Counselor Whitehead. Lot of their practice time was used at Players Paradise as other soccer associations and clubs did. So it wasn't that practice time just because Players Paradise was in Stony Creek off Fruitland Road. It wasn't exclusively for Stony Creek community. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, this has been driven by Mount Hamilton Youth Soccer. They brought a business plan forward and Director Hurstek, please correct me if my memory is flawed, but in the last year or so, their president, Tony DeLuca, and the association brought a business plan forward to Counselor Whitehead and I at the time, being the mountain counselors and just before with the election upon us, not knowing who the new Ward Seven Counselor would be. So dealing with Counselor Whitehead and myself, they were looking for, and there was, I must say, at the time, because it was driven by them with their business plan, trying to work with the City of Hamilton and the Recreation Department. It was to be somewhere, hopefully, on the mountain, if possible, as a preference. So I'm right now caught a bit. I don't mind consulting with the other 11 or 12 soccer associations on the dearth of facilities, that we, indoor facilities and domes that we do not have access and availability and affordability for especially the young kids of our communities to play. So I want this to go forward, but I need for the committee members who don't represent or are new to this committee or don't represent the mountain area, I need to say sincerely and honestly, this is driven by Mount Hamilton Youth Soccer. They've done a heck of a lot of fundraising. They've put a wonderful business plan together. I believe they had initial meetings with some of Chris Hurstek's staff, but for now, to my understanding, Mr. Chairman, their business plan either needed additional work on it, possibly needed further partners. And what Counselor Whitehead and I had discussed was if this committee then could give staff the authority to further meet with Mount Hamilton, to flesh out their business plan, and now with Counselor Clark's suggestion to at least consult with the others, I'm okay with that. But it needs to be understood, this was truly driven by Mount Hamilton and their original business plan and we just wanted to give staff authority to meet with them further where staff initially, and please again, Chris, correct anything that I'm saying that might be misinterpreted by me, but my understanding, Mr. Chairman, was the frontline staff of the city's rec department that's met with the leadership of Mount Hamilton, they read it over and they just couldn't go any further without some political direction. So thank you for allowing me to provide that context further. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Counselor Nan.
Through the chair, thank you to my colleagues for clarifying the context a bit more, but I'm still seeking a little bit more clarity on the motion. So is it to the feasibility vis-à-vis the needs for such a facility or and the city possibly going into partnership to create the facility? I just need that clarified.
Carrie, or Counselor Whitehead?
Sorry, my fault.
Feasibility runs, is a scope. So one of the, part of the scope is determining whether there's a need. That is definitely would be part of the feasibility studies. Don't point billings something if there's not a need. And then as far as the billing, again, the options would be laid out through the feasibility in the context of what business case, what dollars are available and what is feasible. And the staff would come back and report back to us. So this is just sort of doing exploratory investigative work. Look at what the options are to first determine the need and then determine what the options to get there to meet that need and then come back with those options and we would have a robust conversations then. So we're not directing anything more than a broader, having and authorizing our staff to work with the organizations and then come back with a report.
Okay. Are you okay, Counselor Nan, with that?
So, without determining the goal? So the goal is to create a facility? And my, I'm just trying to really understand so I can support you all. Is it a facility that would be owned by the city or would it be a facility owned by a conglomerate potentially of leagues?
So you're already leaping to an outcome when all we're directing our staff to do is meet with these organizations. One, determine need. Two, determine a resolution to the need with what's on the table and then come back to us. That's when we can have those conversations. Is it a public-private partnership? Is it just a private partnership? Right now, that's not the purpose of this report.
So I think it's important though, Counselor Whitehead, I think it's important to emphasize that as a direct result of the, was it the Pleasure Dome is that what they called it? Closure or Paradise?
Pleasure Paradise.
Pleasure Dome was a barn in New York, I think. Okay, so as a result of that closure, there was a vacuum that was created and you're trying to find a solution to that vacuum. Okay. I think that clarifies it. So now we have Counselor Pauls.
Yes. I am so glad, first of all, Carrie, for bringing this up and for Counselor Jackson to actually explain, because I also got a call from them and they are a robust, they have a robust business plan. So I'm sure they are willing to work with the city to find a place. I've met with them as well. But I think anything to do with health to promote, I think it's good. So I'm going to thank Carrie for taking the lead on that and we'll be more clear what they really want. But it is a Mount Hamilton soccer. They are from the Hamilton Mountain. So thank you for bringing that up.
And Counselor Clark.
So can I ask your staff, how many leagues were playing at Paradise, whatever it is? Do we know?
Through the chair, I don't have that exact number, but I'm going to guess it was three, four or five leagues. I do know that Salt Fleet Stony Creek Soccer played there as well as Mount Hamilton Soccer utilized Players Paradise. Probably the majority of soccer groups within the city probably played there as well.
Okay. So I want to support the motion, but it's, the challenge I'm having is the process. If it had been a notice of motion, then those two or three or four soccer leagues could have come here and explained what happened to them because Players Paradise closed.
have come here and explained what happened to them because Players Paradise closed. The Mount Hamilton Soccer League could have presented their business plan to all of us, because I have not seen it. I'm not sure about my other colleague. It has not been distributed. It has not been assessed. And so we're jumping into making a decision on something, and I understand the desire to get it done quickly. But we're talking a two-week period and actually hearing and getting some of this information. I have one piece of paper presented to me, and I'm asking to vote for, to move forward on the feasibility study without seeing the demand, without seeing any of the issues. I see Counsel Whitehead has received it, and Counsel Pauls and Counsel Jackson, but I have not seen it. And our rules and a process are there to prevent this type of folly. We're wrestling now, trying to make sure that we're not doing something here that is advantaging one group over others, and we don't even know what the other groups are. And I don't dispute their need. Their need is probably very clear. But there may be others that are in the same boat. And so we have many policies on how we're dealing with this, and we're short-circuiting the process to get a feasibility study coming back specifically on this, and that's the problem for me. I mean, I would have preferred, quite honestly, hearing from all of the soccer leagues on it. Let's actually get some information, have the business case provided to us so we can see exactly what's happening, what their plans are for 2019, and what type of crisis has the closure of Paradise Players caused across the entire system. I don't have that from staff yet. We're now talking about a feasibility for one group when the closure actually has caused a significant issue, and we don't know what that crisis, if it is even a crisis. Maybe we've absorbed it and it's not an issue. I don't know. So I'm really wrestling with this. I want to support the motion, but I have so many questions.
Would it help to include an item in the motion that reads, because he is asking for feasibility, so that we ensure that all the leagues are incorporated in the consultation of that feasibility study, and that they be invited to attend a committee as a delegation while the feasibility study is being drafted, to inform us of their business case? That way, it covers your angle. We can start moving the process, and it basically covers everybody's bases. Okay. Would you take that as a friendly? Okay.
Just asked to proportionally, what is the largest soccer organization in the city of Hamilton?
He's agreeing to it.
I just want to get this context out.
Through the chair, I don't have registration numbers with me. You mean, we have quite a few very large soccer. I'm sure Mount Hamilton is one of the larger ones as well. Flambro Soccer is very large, as well as Stony Creek Salt Fleet Soccer.
So I have no, and I thought we did that. So the feasibility is doing exactly what is being asked of, and that is for our staff just to enter and be authorized to enter into the conversation, not just with the mountain soccer organization, because that was the adjustment we made, Mr. Chair, but with all the soccer associations. Oh yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I accepted that. But I'm just, for clarity, to take a look at dollars available, first of all, need. I think we need to establish the need. Two, whether we can orchestrate or coordinate the organizations to meeting that need with maybe the private sector's own dollars, with no use of dollars of the city in any way. But we're actually trying to move that yardstick forward. But first of all, you've got to establish the need, and that's part of that consultation. Once you've established that there is a need, then you establish the next steps is, how do we accommodate that need? Who pays for that need? What does that look like? And then you bring that report back. And that would involve all the organizations, Mr. Chair. I hate when we get caught into administrative malaise. I am very open to every suggestion that's been made. This is never about preventing or showing favoritism. This is about an organization, and earnest has been in discussion a long, long time, and I don't think any other organization has approached the city, with this business plan, with this concept. They were very open to other organizations in the conversations I've had. So anything that's been talked about should be incorporated, without question. I have no problem.
Thanks, Counsel Whitehead. Now we have Counsel Jackson.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to wrap up, I really appreciate Counsel Nan and Clark and yourself as non-Mountain residents representatives to wanting to massage this, to try to do your best to support, and I appreciate that. I just want to make it crystal clear, and I'd like to have all 10, 12 clubs around the, having all players meeting around the recreational table eventually if this passes. But I need to make it clear again, Mount Hamilton Youth Soccer Association is the one who's done the fundraising, and they're the ones who approach the mountain counselors with their business plan. Now, to my knowledge, it didn't involve other soccer associations. However, it'd be great to have all the clubs then around the same table to explore the feasibility of what's here. But I just didn't want anybody leaving here today going, oh, great, every one of the clubs now will participate in this new dome, hopefully, if it ever sees the light of day. I want to be crystal clear, honest, and transparent with my non-Mountain colleagues. That Mount Hamilton is the one that's done the fundraising. We're hoping hypothetically, ideally, to build and work with the city to build a facility that they were the ones who pioneered and sponsored, if you will. I just want to make that crystal clear, but it's wonderful to have everyone around the table to have the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so now, the motion has changed from when it was originally drafted or read. So if you can just read it, and it wouldn't have to vote on the amendment, and then the motion has amended. So can you read the amendment to the motion itself?
Yeah, one of the amendments is where they're working.
Okay, sorry, you got to indicate.
That staff be directed to work with Mountain Youth Soccer Association and consult with all the soccer associations in Hamilton to look at the need and the opportunity to create a year-round soccer multi-use facility in Hamilton.
And B, that staff, okay, that staff be directed-
Report back to the committee.
To invite, to invite the associations as delegation to present their business case.
Yeah, okay, I'll put that in there, too. Sure.
Madam Clerk, you're good with that? And Counsel Clark.
All right. We've got one part of the motion that is specifically dealing with the Mount Hamilton Soccer, because there's a business case that we haven't seen, but staff are going to review that business case and talk to them about their desire. So that's part A. Okay? Right? Part B, we need staff to reach out to all of the soccer leagues to find out what the impact was from the Paradise Pleasure. Pleasure. It sounds like a different kind of club. Paradise Players Closure. Correct? Part, yeah, don't get me confused. I'm trying to help here.
We'll now be a pleasure dome. That's right.
That's right. I would, okay. So part B is we want to find out what the impact was to the other leagues from that. And then I think part C would be simply to ask the other leagues to provide input on the proposal of the Mount Hamilton Soccer proposal. Would, I mean, could they use it and all that kind of stuff? Let's find out from that. So I'm trying to assist the councilors. So the first one goes forward so that the staff gets the direction to review the business case, which I think is what Counsel Jackson, Counsel Pauls were really trying to get at. So that gives them the authority. Part B, we do, I don't think so far we have asked the impact to the soccer leagues about the closure of that facility. So that we need to do. And then part C, simply ask them to, or inform them that we're doing this work with Mount Hamilton Soccer, and ask for their feedback. They don't necessarily have to come here, but they could provide the feedback to staff.
Or their business plan.
Absolutely. Okay? And I think that covers all your bases, and not bad for on-the-fly.
Yeah. All right. So moved by, on the amendment-
It's all incorporated. I got, not the same order, because I was running out of room, but I put down impact of the closure of Players Paradise Soccer Dome, for example, at the end of it, not at the front of it.
So on the, no, but on the amendment, that is-
No, no, it's not amendment. I'm accepting all of it.
Madam Clerk, can we accept all of that as a friendly? That's pretty significant.
No.
All right. All right. So on the amendment, moved by Whitehead then, seconded by Clark.
Actually, it's moved by Clark.
Okay, moved by Clark, seconded by Whitehead. All in favor, and we have to vote electronically. All right, that vote passes. Thank you. And the motion that has amended, all in favor, and we have to redo electronically. That was in Niagara, New York. That's right. Yes, it was. Okay. Moving on now, we now have the general information amendment to the outstanding business list. Now, I will require an electronic vote, so may I have a motion, moved by Jackson, seconded by Pauls, all in favor? Terry, you're going to have to vote. Outstanding business list. Okay, and there we go. Now, that passes. Going on to private and confidential, we just have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17th, and that's moved by Whitehead, seconded by Pauls. And we, do we need to do electronically? No, we don't. All in favor? Carried. Any opposed? None. May I have a motion adjourned. Moved by Pauls, seconded by Jackson. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, everybody.[1339.78]